It's time to end the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call, please.
Mayor Moller?
Present.
Counselor Gerson? Counselor Gorley?
Present.
Counselor Trask?
Present.
Counselor Coleman?
Present.
Counselor Richards?
Present.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
I let the record show all seven present, no absent. Before we get started, I will go ahead and start with the meeting instructions for online participation in public meetings. Thank you for everyone who is joining us this evening. For those, for members of the public and who would like to take part in tonight's meeting virtually, we have some instructions to help in case you are new to the Microsoft's team. To take part, you will need to locate the chat bubble icon to participate in the meeting online. The chat bubble icon indicated with a yellow arrow on the screen now, maybe in your right, upper right-hand corner of your screen, or you may need to click on three dots to see an extended dropdown menu. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak during the meeting, please choose the bubble icon to enter in the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, you will enter your name, address, and phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss with the council. If you have signed in, you may be called on to speak at any point during the meeting, but probably during the agenda item you have entered to speak about. You can choose the hand icon also located in the upper right-hand corner to indicate you desire to speak. It is equivalent to raising your hand. The mayor, the acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone who may wish to speak tonight a few minutes right now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they would like to address to the council. In the interest of time, speakers should not repeat the points that previous speakers. Instead, state what you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time will be at the sole discretion of the mayor or the meeting chairperson per council rules. Those joining the phone by, excuse me, those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor and chairperson and called up to speak at the appropriate time. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in council rules. Before we get started, we had a, it is 6:33. We had a land use public hearing for application ZMA 21-01, which properly knows to take place this evening. However, it is mistakenly left off the agenda for tonight, and the city council did not receive a copy of the application materials or the staff report. Consequently, I will open the public hearing right now at 6:33 PM and will immediately continue it to May 6, 2021 at 5:30 PM, which will give the city council time to review the application materials and staff report. We will hear any public comments at that time and invite any interested parties to make their voices heard then. The public hearing is now closed at 6:34.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to apologize to the council for that mishap on staff's part, on our part, and not getting that on the agenda. Also to the property owners and their engineering, for my apologies.
Oh, I know. Before I get started, I have a young lady that entered the If I Was a Mayor contest. Her name was Madeline Coleman. She did an awesome job. Has anybody seen her poster? It's up on the screen, but it's back here somewhere. I just seen it this evening. She did a great job. I'm glad you entered and very proud of what you did. At this time, I'd like you to come forth. I'd like you to come around.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it seems a little fishy to me how that happened. Would Counselor Coleman like to address that at all?
I happened to notice there was a contest happening.
I'm going to have you hold this up so this guy can take your picture. Got a thank you shirt for you. And we got a little McDonald's. Then I'm going to let you just go ahead and say the meeting goes to start, present. And if you'd like to say, you know, Counselor Trask, you're out of order, you could go up too. We're recording.
There we go. Hey.
Meeting has now started.
There you go. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, I like the center of that urgent care.
Yes, I do. She did a great job. Like I said, she did a great job.
Mayor, can I interrupt for just a second? Just so you know, I did not coach her on this poster, but she does listen to everything I say, I guess, because it appeared on the poster, so.
That's good.
And she also watched the urgent care appear in Lebanon and was disappointed that there wasn't one in Sweet Home, so that's why she put it in there.
Hopefully, we can get that changed one of these days. Moving on. Recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Anybody who would like to come forth, be heard by the council? Mr. Hawley?
Dave Hawley, 7th Avenue.
Welcome out. Sorry, Dave. All this new technology.
My name is Dave Hawley, 607 7th Avenue in Sweet Home. I'd like to take a few minutes, if I may, and talk about what I, the report I read in the paper concerning the American Rescue Plan Act and the explanation to council and the council's comments. Offer some thoughts of my own and some comments of my own. I couldn't find any fault in the choices that council expressed. I may have rated them a little differently, but I was surprised and a little disappointed that no one brought up or talked about the help to businesses that could be taken and given under this act. As you know, that there's an amount of $2 million and a little bit in change that will come to the city of Sweet Home. I was surprised at the amount that is going to the different cities. But we do know that our businesses have been greatly impacted by the coronavirus thing, and it's not over yet. They just received notice today that at the end of the month, we'll be going back again on the no inside seating provision that will affect restaurants, et cetera. We have long taken a position, this council, as well as other councils, that we need to do all that we can to help the businesses that we have and to recruit new business to the city. And I think that under the provisions of this act, we have a very unique chance to make good on some of the lip service that we've given over the years, that we'd like to help you, but we can't use tax dollars. We've got some money available now that can be used for that purpose. If I read correctly, and I'm a little bit like Will Rogers, I only know about what I read in the newspaper. That was the initial reporting of the money coming in and the initial reporting of the information passed on to the city council and their comments. I think that we need to take advantage of this money and use a small portion of it to help these businesses that have been really badly affected by it. I've made my own informal survey, and I've done this two or three different times. My plans have been all over the place on it. I've came up with 21 businesses within the city that didn't fall into the category of essential, where they couldn't, you know, keep running. They had to close either partially or completely. Restaurants that offered only inside seating had to adapt to a delivery-type service, which helped a little bit, but of course, didn't take care of everything. And I would have to point out that while a lot of people think that I'm always right, I'm not infallible. There might be more than those 21 businesses that would fall into this category. I would urge that the city council use part of this money. And as I understand it, under this act, one of the things that can be done is to establish a grant program for local businesses impacted by shutdowns during the pandemic. Would read into that, that are severely affected by it, by their business being able to operate at 20% capacity or whatever. I would ask that the council take these 21 businesses and put together some type of grant program, not by them coming in and filling out an application, but by the city choosing to use part of this money in the amount of $10,000 each of those businesses. And as I said, my list is not perfect. You may expect another two to three to four and expect that number to go up and expect to spend from that $2 million, some $250,000 in this effort. I think the best way to do it, I would volunteer my time. The city could put together a letter that would say, it has been brought to my attention that your business is, your business, excuse me, I have sinus problems, they continually drain. I've had my shots. Your business has been adversely affected. You've had to shut down, or you've lost a tremendous amount of business due to the epidemic. If the answer to either of these questions is yes, please write your name, contact person, telephone number, and get this letter back to the city, and we may be able to help you. I will personally go around to each of these businesses with this and take care of that myself. They can come back on me, or they'll come to you, I'm sure, saying, why wasn't I included? And with that happening, there may be two or three more that fit into that category that the council say they should, they should do this too. But I think it's a perfect opportunity and a unique opportunity. We have never, as long as I've had anything to do with the city, been in a position to help these people like this. We cannot make them whole. We can only maybe give them a little bit of a hand up instead of them having to reach a hand out. It's not a cure-all, but it's something that I think needs to be done. We've already lost several businesses. Skyline Inn, longtime restaurant in Sweet Home, closed its doors. Said, can't do this anymore. Seemingly creative, on Main Street. Lorraine, a very nice lady, had to shut her door. She couldn't do it anymore. She tried to work it part-time and do the best she could. And I think we may have others that will fall by the wayside before this thing is all over. I just think we're in the position to be able to help them a little bit. My mall head, I still need a barber occasionally, but for the first, what, three months or so that all this started, you couldn't get into a barber shop. They were all closed. Beauty salons, here in that category, they were all closed. And they will be closed again. It's, the thing is not over. Like I said, we can't make them whole, but we can help them. This request or this money would amount to about 11% to 12% of that total that is coming into the city. It would leave the rest of it, the remaining 87%, 88% for, excuse me, for those projects and those things that you guys have talked about. And it would be up then to you to decide on your priorities and how you want to do it. As I understand the program, the money has to be spent by the end of December 2024. I think this money that I am asking and proposing should be out of the first part of that that comes in. You're going to have a lot of discussion to do before you come to any consensus or agreement on how you're going to handle the big part of it. And I also want to say that I'm really not interested in waiting to see what somebody else is going to do. I don't care what Lebanon does with their money. I don't care what Dayton or Malala does with their money. These are cities that we're often compared to when we start talking about doing things. More than me to say. Did I hire a new PR person to explain why they're not taking care of business a little bit better? I don't know, but I think that this is what we can do. And by disclosure, I am not a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I have no financial interest in any of these businesses. I have talked to none of these business owners. No one knew that I was going to propose this or put it together, with the exception of the mayor and Counselor Trask, who I met with earlier today as a courtesy to where I wouldn't spring something on him. I've sat in Greg's spot before, and it's sometimes not very nice to have somebody come at you with something without you knowing what's going on. But I, I would do more than ask. I would implore you to put together a program such as this. It can be used for this. And I think that we, as a community, owe it to the businesses that have done their darndest to try and work through this, to recognize that with what help we can give them. I said, 11% to 12% of the $2 million would be money well spent. I'm happy to do anything I can forward with this, should you decide to go that way, and be available for whatever you ask in that regard. Be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. And I realize that I'm giving you stuff to digest that you probably weren't expecting to hear about, but we can't use tax money. This isn't tax money. This is money coming to the city under the auspices of this American Rescue Plan Act. It's not a grant to the city. It's to be used in a number of different ways. One last thing that I would include in this, and I'm not real sure that this could be done. I do know that it mentions water, wastewater, and infrastructure improvements. One of our big needs is streets. And as you're well aware, we have a hard time with just the amount of gas tax money that comes in to the city and putting together any type of meaningful street repair program. Because historically, we use about 80% of that gas tax money on salaries, benefits, equipment, and the like. And you don't have much left over. We do as best we can with the road fund money that came out of an 18 or 1989 agreement with the county when we took over Oak Terrace and 10th Avenue up to Alder and put some money into a road fund as a result of that. But if it's possible, I think council should consider also using another $250,000 of this money dedicated to streets, whether it's for work that is currently outlined or if it could be put into the budget to be used prior to the end of 2024. It would be money well spent in that. Thanks for your attention, and as I say.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to talk about a couple of things. When we had our conversation today, and I think we had a little bit of a conversation without the mayor for, maybe not on this, but I was under the understanding at the time that it was all for infrastructure. And you informed me that that's not necessarily true, and I agree with that. And I 100% agree with you that 21 people, you're going to get more than that, and probably rightfully so. You know, these people have been hurt for 18 months or however long it's been. And if we can, in my opinion, I think that this would be something that this city should do. I really do, now that we might not agree on all that. And Brian and Ray, is there some time? Some timeline for this money to come into the city?
We actually anticipate that money coming in any day at this point, because the initial language required it within 60 days of passage. I do want to remind the council that the language of that bill was very specific in that it said water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Unfortunately, it would not allow for street infrastructure.
I didn't know. When they talked infrastructure, I was surprised that streets wasn't specifically mentioned, and broadband was. But that's the federal government putting down those regulations and rules about it, so.
Just to let you know, Brandon had to slap me down on a couple of occasions too, because I was trying to play with semantics and the commas. And he's like, no, it's broadband infrastructure, not just infrastructure.
But I just think that this is a unique opportunity for the city to recognize how much that there has been a struggle in the business community. A lot of these places, I don't use Steelhead Fitness Center after all, you know. But they have been able to run maybe 10% of the time during this, what has went on. There's a lot of older people that use that. I don't fall category either, but it's just something I think we need to do.
Well, when I met with Mr. Hawley, I applaud your proposal. I very much do, and I am in full support of it. I was like Counselor Trask with oppression, infrastructure, not thinking outside the box of other things too. But if that's something we possibly do, something that I think we need to explore. But again, the question is the infrastructure question was what we were proposed with. But I fully support if we can do it. I think there's a lot of small businesses that need our help right now, because the last thing I want to see is other small businesses in Sweet Home closing up.
I think we're all in that category, I think, Mr. Mayor, that we, whether we use their services or not, as an individual, they're important to our community. And it's important that we keep everything that we can here. Like I said, we can't make them whole. You can't make, if you're talking about a pot of $20 billion, then, you know, there's something else. But you can't take every cent of that money and complete any of those projects included under infrastructure that you talked about. You can't complete one of them with the amount that's coming in. But you can help lessen an impact back to the voters on bond issues or on rate increases or whatever it may be by what you're able to do with that other million and a half or 1.7 or whatever that you have. But I think our business community deserves our help, and they can be helped out of this, whatever we come up with. And I'm available to assist in that, however I can do it.
I totally agree with you, Charlie.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Any comments?
Yes. Before we move to a situation like this, we need to know what is in the rescue plan for our businesses, because it's my understanding that they are going to have businesses that show their 2019 income tax returns and compare them to the 2020, and they may be made whole for that difference. And so before we change the course of what our decisions are with the information we're given, we need to make sure we know what's available to the businesses from the federal government before we take dollars, because we have a tenet to do the most good for the most people for the longest period of time. And infrastructure money doesn't come to us very often to be able to offset the needs for the community as a whole and all those people. So we need more information before we'd make any kind of decision on this subject, so.
I understand that anything that can benefit the entire community can be a priority, but I don't think that you can wait a year before you decide that, well, we could have helped them, and we didn't realize it at the time. I think we need to act. I'm interested to know, I guess, that there is such a thing that you talk of available, maybe.
We brought that up earlier today. It was the PPP program. How many took advantage of that? Who hasn't taken advantage of that? When you talk about 21 businesses, some may not even want it.
Some of those payroll protection programs, people that haven't applied for those are maybe because they are family-owned businesses. If you're paying your wife or your daughter or whoever to be a part of it, this is where it all comes in. I don't think we need to look for excuses to not do it. I think we need to look for ways to do it. We give lip service to a lot of things, but we just need to act.
Sounds just fair.
I agree with Counselor Gorley. As a small business owner, I have applied. Applied for PPPs are forgiven, and there is a lot of resources out there for businesses to apply for. So before we move forward with spending this money, I would like to make sure that those people were not eligible for those type of things, if that were the case. Because like Counselor Gorley said, we have. Because like Counselor Gorley said, we have to use this money for the greater good for the longest possible time, because our kids and our grandkids will have to repay this money back. So I just, I want to be mindful that there is money available.
That's all well and good. But in my view, you're treating this as a grant to the city to use as the council sees fit. You're not looking at it as the American Rescue Plan Act. And I think that, just like the stimulus money that came out to individuals, it has purpose. If it didn't have the purpose, it wouldn't outline what you can and can't do with it. You can't use it to replace tax money. You can't use it for certain things, but you can use it for what I'm proposing that you do. I just think it's real important that you do that. I don't want to see, they take out enough loans as it is in order to survive. I don't want to push them to a place to where you've got to go get another loan. When, we're not going to pay all their bills with this money. We're using eleven percent of the money that is allocated to the city of Sweet Home under this proposal. And I fully think that it's the right thing to do. I appreciate your comments, but I don't agree with it. Thanks for your attention. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other comments from councilors or?
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is going to have to take effect when the money comes, if it gets here. And some of those buildings, some of those properties may go out of business before that. And ten thousand dollars might not do anything to help them. It can't hurt, but.
I think when the money does come, as a council, we need to come back and convene and discuss it and see what's the best we can do with this money. We're not looking for a decision this evening, but Mr. Holly has made a very valid proposal for us to think about. So thank you again, Mr. Holly. And like I say, we need to be thinking about all these proposals and everything that's come forth. So in the most wise way, so.
I agree that we've got to be very careful with this. And there might be money out there, but do those people know how to get to that money? That'd be one of my questions. But this is a pretty, a different opportunity that we may never have again. Where they won't mandate, we can do this or that or whatever. And so that's just a thought I'm having. And whatever the council does will be, will be good. And it's, you know, so anyway, thanks for it, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else who would like to come forth before council be heard? Okay, moving on to public comment regards to Oregon Jamboree.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, can we jump back up to the consent agenda? We got a little, we got excited for Madeline, I think, jumped ahead.
We didn't approve it?
No, we didn't.
Okay, my apologies. Moving back to consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all fair by roll call.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley? Counselor Gerson? Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
So we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of consent agenda. And again, I thought we'd already done it. My apologies. Moving on to old business, nothing. New business, I have a proclamation. I started with a jamboree and then, okay, let's back up. Let's start over. Rewind. Jamboree. Yeah, you need to take over.
You have a comment about the jamboree that the community member asked to be make available to you. So that is part of your packet of information.
Any questions regarding the Oregon Jamboree of councilors?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So are we going to get a proposal regarding this?
So we have, Chief Lynn has spent quite a bit of time going through. We will continue to work through it. Essentially, what we're trying to do is, is work with the jamboree to put on an event which meets the mandates that we don't know are going to be in place three months from now, four months from now. So we're hoping that there's an event or we're hoping to bring you something that, that is, is not going to be well-defined insofar as precautions that may or may not have to be taken at that point in time. So you, you, you will certainly get something, but I think we're trying to, we're trying to figure out a way to present it to you in which, because it's not going to be X, Y, Z. It's going to be maybe a little X and then back to B and then Z. And so we're trying to put it together for you. But yeah, we actually have the documents. They submitted them a couple of weeks ago. And now that we're going to extreme, we're, I have a magic eight ball. And Jeff has a crystal ball, I think. And we're going to do the best we can to put something together for you.
So I don't know if everybody heard it today, but I was listening to the news on the way to this meeting. And they were announcing that the CDC is now recommending that people can be up in outdoor spaces without masks if they've been vaccinated. And I found that very encouraging, even with our numbers going back up. I thought that was really encouraging.
I agree with that. I heard the same thing today. My, my concern would be people that are drinking, I don't, but people that are drinking, are they going to follow those things? I don't know. I don't know. That would be a question that I'd like to have answered, which you probably can't answer because you can't control that necessarily. So and I'm thinking, are they talking like five thousand people or something? And they're going to distance as much as can. I don't, I don't know. It's really up in the air for me.
Yes. I mean, that's all we can tell you for now is yes, so.
And I do, I do appreciate the letter that we got, you know, their concern. I don't blame them. I'm, I've had the vaccination. I was happy to see that I wasn't going to get arrested to walk on Main Street without a mask on. So, but yeah, I have, I have some, some things that bother me a little bit. So I'm not against this thing. I'm not against it. I'm just saying that there's some concerns I think that might be addressed.
I had a business owner today was, had made a comment that he talked to the county commissioners and said that the possibility Friday that they're going to turn this over to the county commissioners to make decisions within their own counties. I'm not sure how much fruition that's coming, but something to keep in mind. It may be ever changing come Friday. So, and this public comment with Oregon Jamboree, I have to tell you, I've been trying to put this in my rearview mirror today because I had a fifteen minute lashing by somebody from Portland. And it was not a positive conversation. So how dare we have a jamboree conversation? Anyway, moving that fast, my rearview mirror if I can. Anyway, moving on now to new business proclamation, Mental Health Month, May twenty twenty-one. May twenty twenty-one Mental Health Month proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas promotion, prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas there is a strong body of research that supports user-friendly tools that all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, veterans groups, and citizens have the responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has had profound impacts on the mental health of people of all ages. And now more than ever, it is critical to reduce the stigma around the mental health struggles that commonly prevents individuals from seeking help. By limiting media consumption, staying connected and loved ones and staying active, we can maintain our mental health as we try to protect the physical health. And whereas Lynn County Mental Health Advisory Board is emphasizing that there is no health without mental health by being involved with public service announcements, health fairs, public speakers, and various trainings regarding mental health issues. Therefore, I, Greg Mahler, due hereby proclaim, May twenty twenty-one, is Mental Health Month in Sweet Home. As the mayor, I also call upon citizens, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Sweet Home to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of the mental health, the steps of our citizens can take to protect the mental health and the needs of appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Proclaim the twenty-seventh day of April, twenty twenty-one. Moving on, request for proposal integrator of record services.
So I think we'll turn this over to Director Springman and Trish, I think, if she's going to come up and fill you in on this.
Good evening. So we are taking over our treatment plants in-house again, starting July first. And this is kind of a component of that. What an integrator is, they work on the automated systems that help make the plant go. So pump switches for on and off based on pressures, chemical feed rates based on flow rate, that sort of thing. These tend to be very computerized systems, and they're not necessarily something that the operators are skilled to troubleshoot and install new ones because they all have to work together, kind of like a symphony. So the integrator is basically the conductor that helps everything work properly. In the past, we haven't had a single integrator of record to oversee all of our plant operations. We have one company that we have used many times, but it's not like an ongoing contract or anything. It's just been as needed. And because of that, and also different contractors that have done work at the plants with the new water treatment plant, for example, things weren't all integrated correctly at the beginning. And so we have controls that have never worked correctly from the beginning. So it's kind of a combination of, we need one cook in the kitchen to oversee everything. So we would like to put forth an RFP, solicit some companies that do this sort of work. We'll do the same process that we do for engineering firms. We'll rank them based on qualifications, how available they are to help us, that sort of thing. And then come back to council to recommend which one we would prefer to have. Are there any questions?
Any questions with council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. So on page twenty-four, it talks about the fact that, let's see if I can find it. That most of these services would be done by email and telephone. It's, it's. So it says at the very bottom of page twenty-four of the agenda, which is page five of, five of your proposal. It says that much of the work occurs via telephone and conferences and email. Is that correct?
I think that might have been a leftover from, I recycled the RFP from our engineer. So I can certainly update that. There will be some work that is done by phone and email. But there will also be some onsite work for the integrator.
Well, that was my question, because then on page forty-six, it says that there's a lot of other services, construction, et cetera, et cetera. So my point is, is that in the budget right now, and Brandon, you'd have to correct me, are these considered technical services or professional services?
Okay, so let me dive a little bit deeper in the explanation. What this contractor do is, as we're building the new wastewater plant, we have limited SCADA that operates that plant controls. We have a lot of issues on the water side. We want to bring an integrator record on, so the work will be actually performed from the capital projects. So they won't be as a part of our own in-budget at all. But the idea is that you get, you know, as we talk about what occurred in Florida, where somebody hacked in, this is all part of that. We're currently evaluating our SCADA system right now. Having a sole integrator of record will help us bridge the gap between the two plants and look at our vulnerabilities to the public. And so this is kind of the first basis of that. And it will be funded directly through all capital projects. The work that we're currently doing at the water treatment plant, the design work that we're currently doing at the wastewater plant, and then other work as it comes up, as we're doing stuff with the systems and other things.
Well, that's the initial, but ongoing, this is an ongoing service, I assume.
Yeah, it'd be, it would be like any type of an IT-type service. They can look things in remotely. They can meet with Stephen. Stephen also does this type of work or used to him in his past. So there will be a lot of communication that way. But these guys will be onsite and they could be doing things remotely. I mean, our IT service for our buildings, we will have stuff remotely as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, to answer Counselor Gerson's question, it'll be technical services. And after, after the project, after specific projects are completed for ongoing kind of one-off items.
So would the technical person that we're going to hire be able to assist with this also?
This is, this is extremely specialized work that, that our in-house IT, that's not something they would be able to manage.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nindi. Second.
Motion second, approved by roll call, please.
I'm sorry, again, with the masks, we can't see. So can I get who made the motion in the second again?
Counselor Gorley first and Paul made the second.
Thank you. Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, approval of the proposal for integrator. Moving on now, request for council action twenty twenty-one overlay project contract approval.
We'll just keep Trish right there.
All right, so we posted the bid solicitation to do an overlay project. We received four bids. The low bidder was North Saniam Paving at one ninety-four. The engineer's estimate was two hundred and sixty-four, so significantly lower than the engineer's estimate. And that was very exciting. We got some last-minute questions from contractors about details in the plans, what the scope of the project was. And in the process of answering those questions, I realized I needed to fall on my sword a little bit for you guys because there were some details in the plans that I missed that do add some cost, where some sections of the roads are so bad that we can't just put two inches of pavement on some of these. We have to fix the base rock and then put four inches of pavement. So the good news is that even with the new estimate and including all that extra paving, we are still around two hundred and thirty for an estimate on what that project cost will be. It's still below what we thought it was going to be, and it's still within budget. So we are requesting permission to execute the contract and perform this project.
Question, I mean, just clarification, North Saniam, we've seen their work?
Yes, they've done a lot of work in Sweet Yes, they've done a lot of work in Sweet Home historically.
Okay. That's why I, I thought so, but I just want to make sure because there's not much difference between night, lemon, night forever. So that's why I wanted to, curious.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, did you get a new bid with the varying site condition questions? Or like you said, that there was some things that weren't included, so is their price for 194? Did everybody get a chance to bid those items that you didn't include?
Yes, so we didn't reissue the bid, uh, but these are quantity adjustments on the existing bid items in the contract. Uh, we didn't feel that it was a large enough difference to justify reissuing. But if council would like us to do that, then we certainly can.
I'm just nervous that they might run into more things and we could have more of a cost that they didn't see. So we might get a low bid, but it might run a lot more higher, so.
And, uh, we do also have this project broken out into schedules. So if we start working on schedule A, B, and C, and then we find out that something unexpected came up, um, and if we run out of the contingency, then we could cut schedule D, for example, and move it to the next phase.
Any other questions?
One we just recommended.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Roy Lee, second, by Counselor Coleman, um, venture, uh, by roll call, please.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley? Mayor Moller?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Seven eyes, no names, approval of the overlay contract approval of North San Am. Next up, request for council action 2021 overlay project phase two bid posting.
Uh, this begins on page 95 of your packet. Uh, and once again, I'd like to introduce Trish Rice.
We had previously, uh, recommended to council to break up our paving project into two phases because of the, um, anticipated, well, unknown delay, uh, due to the ODOT intergovernmental agreement to use their state highway funds. Um, and we, we didn't want all of our paving work to get hung up on however long that may take. So we broke it up. Well, ODOT has surprised us and they turned around that IGA within about a week, um, and it's done now. And so, uh, we're bringing phase two to you today so that we can, hopefully issue this project and get another round of paving done, uh, this summer, starting after July with the new budget year. The estimate that is in your packet is based on the draft that was in your packet. Um, we had made some assumptions that we would work on some of the ADA ramps, uh, in-house, a few other things we were planning to do in-house, shoulder rock. We have since had a few more conversations, uh, Dominic and I have discussed. And partially because of some staff moving from maintenance to the treatment plants, um, we just didn't feel that we would have the staff capacity this summer with all of our other projects and new staff coming on board and everything, uh, to do all of the things in-house that we initially thought. So we added those to the project. Um, and our current estimate is about 450,000. So it is higher than what is represented in your packet. Um, but we feel that it's more accurate to, um, to what the bid set is actually going to be. And I did go through, uh, phase two and make sure that it doesn't have the same mistakes in it from phase one. So, um, I can't promise that there aren't any mistakes. And we might discover something with contractor questions during bidding or in construction, but we've gone through it as best as we can. And the plans that are in the packet and the contract that's in the packet, uh, were a draft, but they haven't changed substantially. If you would like to see the final version, we can get that to you. Uh, but we are requesting authorization to post, uh, request for bids.
Any questions, Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, I got a comment. Uh, the, the thing is, for me is, is that I would be shocked if you don't come up on something that's not going to be what we think it's going to be. And so as many of the roads that have been let go for such a long time, we could, we could have some, some issues that we don't know. I mean, that would make common sense to me, so anyway, that's my comment.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So Trish, I noticed that Vine Street off of 18th is one of those scheduled. That's also around that LID proposal. If we do Vine Street, are we going to have to redo it if we do the LID?
No, because Vine Street has completed city water and city sewer. So we don't need to do any utility work on Vine.
Okay, so we're not.
Vine Street is not within the boundaries of the LID.
No, I know it's not within the boundaries, but my question is that oftentimes we damage something when we're trying to do something else, may I say that? But I just want to be sure that if we're going to do that, that we're not going to have to redo it if the LID goes through, that's my only concern. And this is just to be able to go out for bids?
Yes. So, yeah, we'll still come back to council before any contracts gets up.
And some of these projects you were talking about didn't have, needing water line or sewer line?
Yeah, we have to, we don't have to do any additional work other than, um, minor curb and gutter. And I think we were looking at doing, I mean, not curb and gutter, but payday E-ramps. And we're gonna do some of that work in-house, but we'll figure that in public works. This is just gonna be strictly overlay.
Any other questions, Counsel? Counsel Director?
So moved as recommended?
Second, oh, go ahead, sorry. Counselor Gerson, you can have it.
Second it.
Coleman first, Gerson second.
Gotcha.
By roll call, please.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Trask? Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson? Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes.
My request for council action transportation program operation agreement.
Is on page 140 of your packet. This is an IGA that we keep with the, uh, Lynn Shuttle for operation, uh, particularly one of the programs in which we act as a pass-through. Uh, it's renewed, uh, every two years and this one is, uh, is up for renewal.
Questions of council? Counsel Director?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the transportation program operation agreement between the city of Sweet Home and the senior citizens.
I'll second that.
Counselor Gerson motioned and Counsel Coleman second, all fair by roll call, please.
Uh, let me start with, let's see, Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Mayor Moller?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley? Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Seven eyes, no names, approval of transportation program operation agreement. Um, nothing under ordinance bills, seeing, uh, reports of committee. Any, what brought forth, both committees?
So, um, the ad hoc committee had a lovely they did a great job, there's a lot of energy. I'm very, very pleased and proud of the work that they're doing in there. And I believe that has been moved to our website. Is that what they were going to do with that, the video presentation? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, the charter committee met today and, um, we will have a recommendation to the council probably by July, but maybe, maybe in June.
Sounds good. Any other committee reports?
I guess I have one more. Um, the Rural Development Initiative Leadership Group, uh, will graduate in May. I will be attending that graduation and discussing the Youth Advisory Council with those students. So I'm excited to get with, with them.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing I'd like to, um, I was down when they were doing the, uh, meeting today and they could really use some help when they're planting their flowers in two weeks on, I believe, a Monday? Whatever day it is, we'll put that out. So, but they, they, they're gonna be planting thousands of, uh, of, uh, flowers. So they could use some help if you could, I mean, physically be there, so thanks.
I know the beautiful case committee needs, they need use help. Um, any other things for any of the committees? Go on to Mayor's report, um, just as a reminder, uh, May 6th, we'll have that public hearing before at 5:30. Um, also is our budget meeting, uh, May 13th and May 18th, also is our budget hearing, 18th being possible. And all start at 6 o'clock. And, uh, I'm stepping out of town, starting tomorrow, we'll be back Sunday. Counselor Gerson will fill in in case it needed for the role that happens, anything should happen. City manager report.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I have one question. Did you appoint another, uh, budget person today?
I haven't, well, I recommended a certain individual, but he, he kind of said, I don't think so.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was clear.
It doesn't even look like he's smiling under that mask.
I think he's napping.
Um, but I do, one quick question though, the planning commission, do we, did we fill that? We had one that was a proposal Julie brought forth.
To my knowledge, we have advertised the vacancy, but have not.
Okay, still have the one open.
We still have opening, yeah.
I know Julie brought forth the, the way that the last voting and everything, I didn't know where that left off. So I was, I was curious if the loader. Okay, uh, city manager report.
Uh, reminder tomorrow evening, or excuse me, Thursday evening is the second open house on the LID. We have mailed invitations of this meeting to every resident in the neighborhood, uh, inviting them to attend, sharing a link with them to attend on Zoom. This is the second one that we've done, uh, with the neighborhood. Uh, there were a couple of people that showed up last time. Uh, we're hoping for more, uh, this time, keeping our fingers crossed. We have gotten a couple other options that we're proposing and, and discussing with the community members. And, um, after this one, we'll take their feedback and we will bring that back to you for your final decision. Uh, and then I would reiterate the mayor's, um, uh, budget, uh, meetings, uh, upcoming next week. And, uh, again, apologize for not getting that public hearing on the agenda for you tonight.
Okay, department directors' reports, any directors like to bring forth, or any questions of our department directors?
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Go ahead.
First off, I'll apologize, you don't have a finance report tonight. Your budget was, was the higher priority, unfortunately, so you'll get a report next time from me. Um, but I do want to just throw out something that the council has asked finance to look into multiple times, and that is, uh, the issue surrounding bank charges. Um, so I, I do want you to know that we are moving forward as best we can in, in trying to get better rates for our, our credit card charges. Um, we've just recently worked with one of our vendors to lower our, um, our percentage that they charge for each of our transactions that, that should save us about, it seems like a little amount, but $5,000 a year, um, which if you remember, that budget is, I think, 56,000, um, in the finance side. So we are doing what we can to, to tackle those issues. Um, and certainly, you know, $5,000 is $5,000, so we're, we're pleased in that regard. But we are trying to move forward in that regard.
Thank you, Brandon, I'll call you Brandon, not Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Brandon, so you're gonna do something that we asked about the debt also. What we wanted to, at least I do, I want to know what the debt limit is, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, we will, that'll, that'll be all included in your next meeting.
Thank you.
Now, our police chief has a report you'd like to bring forth?
I just wanted to, uh, include one thing not actually in my report. Tomorrow is the anniversary of one of our employees. Um, it's, she has been with our department for 40 years tomorrow. That's, uh, Commander Penny Leland. And, and without Penny and her support, I would be completely lost. And so I'm just appreciative of her and that's an amazing milestone, in my opinion.
I think on behalf of this, of the council and the city, we convey a thank you for her service.
I'll do that.
Are you having a party?
Might as well cake.
That's pretty good, that's impressive.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Chief Lynn. Sorry to put you on the spot, sir. Um, is there anything that a community can do to help with the, you have a huge call volume of difficult calls, is there anything that we can do? And if you can't think of anything right now, maybe you can let me know later.
Uh, yeah, well, I'll, uh, ponder that, a lot of it is just awareness. And many of these calls are, um, are difficult to handle because of the nature of them. And I, I believe you referred to some of the, the calls we associate with mental health and suicidal calls that, that we've noticed a, a significant increase in. And so it coincides with the Mental Health, Health Awareness Month. And, and as my report indicates, you know, we've been trying to work with Lynn County Mental Health, um, and just increasing their, their, uh, level of service in our area. And, and so that's gonna kick off, hopefully, if not the end of this week, next week. You know, we're, we're compiling a list of those that we believe need the, um, the priority of, of help, or we need the priority of help with, with those individuals. Yeah, and try to do some additional outreach, uh, some additional engagement, maybe some follow-up and, or even in the end, maybe some, uh, med delivery, something such as that.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, so Chief Lynn, will you keep a surprise of, of how that goes? Cause I'm quite concerned about that also.
Absolutely.
So, um, uh, has it, been any thought given to this program that comes out of Eugene, the Kahoots Program? In terms of helping officers with those kinds of calls?
Not on that level.
I see.
Eugene and, and that area, they, they, they invest significant, uh, funds to, to, to run that. And that's just not, uh, not even the realm of possibilities right now. That's why we're trying to just engage on the levels we can with, uh, some of the healthcare providers. Uh, our community service officer, um, Sean Morgan's done an amazing job at making some connections, uh, even locally with some, um, some counseling services that, that we really hadn't been connected with up until about, you know, a year or so ago. And so we're, we're trying to go down all different types of avenues to, um, to find resources to get here. But what we found is the difficult part is we can bring the resources here, but individuals don't necessarily have to engage, especially if, if some don't believe that they need to engage in those services.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr.? Okay, thank you, Jeff, and keep up the good work. Um, city attorney? Okay, any council business good of order? If not, we will go ahead and adjourn at 7:38.